Okay, we were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, November 18th, 2024. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets here in the second meeting of this month, we are very pleased to note that we have today received applications for every ward, for somebody, at least one, and in many cases, two, are going to run for Alderman of the community of Batavia. And we have a contest for mayor, and we have some interesting times they had. So I want to just acknowledge that Batavia is a very lucky city to have as many people who want to step forward and participate in their management and growth and understanding of the City Council. Tonight, we ask for a special blessing on all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask a special blessing, we showered, on each of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. Tonight, we also ask for understanding and vision and appreciation on the parts of the members of the City Council as they vote on the issues before them, knowing that in their hearts and minds, they are here to do what is in the best interest of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Who wants to do Pledge of Allegiance? A volunteer? Alderman Lee?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Harazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vocal singer.
Here.
Fourteen present and an absent.
Let the record reflect, we're here for the complete City Council tonight. So moving then to the reminder that we ask if anybody's going to use the microphone, that they please come forward and use the podium so that they can be understood, because this is all on TV, and if you don't use the podium and the mic, it's very hard for people watching on TV to glean what has been transpiring. Moving to item five, items removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda, do we have anything from any of the Aldermen? I didn't think so. Okay, moving to item six is the presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Beck, it's your moment.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for October 15th, 2024, and October 29th, 2024, and November 4th, 2024. And for approval, the November 8, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,126,613.62. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,070,718.67. The City Council minutes for November 4th, 2024. And for approval, the Cow Executive Session minutes from September 29th, 2024 on personnel and October 29th, 2024, a discussion of contracts related to the purchase, sale, or delivery of electricity. Resolution 2024-144-R, approve a resolution to accept a plot of utility easement at 1992 McKee Street. Resolution 2024-145-R, approve a contract with Mead Electric for the installation of off-site underground 15-kV electric infrastructure improvements for the Ashton Ridge development in the amount of $637,683, which includes a 10% contingency. Resolution 2024-142-R, authorizing a shared parking licensing agreement with the Batavia Public Library District. Resolution 2024-146-R, a software hosting agreement. Resolution 2024-143-R, approval of the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Department of Energy for ME LAB for the public water supply. Orance 2024-65, the 2025 salaries and wages for paid-on-call members of the Fire Department. Orance 2024-66, 2025 wages for ESDA members of the Fire Department. And Resolution 2024-139-R, authorization to bind insurance. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Alderman Beck, second. Alderman Stoffel, for the approval of the consent agenda, any discussion from the City Council?
Karen, I just wanted to point out the one for the shared parking license agreement with the park district or with the public library, because I think that people really need to know that those parking spaces will all be open, available for public parking overnight or during nighttime hours. And with all the stuff we have going on in town, it's nice to have another parking lot that's actually public, you know, not just for the library.
Thank you for sharing that. I mean, it's a very good piece of news, because we are seemingly getting more and more people visiting our downtown, so it's good to have that in the background.
Are we talking about putting up any initial signage or anything like that so people know?
Okay. And that's why I wanted to bring it up, is because I think we just need to keep talking about it as well, so that anybody and everybody knows that it's available.
Anybody else? Kirk, call the roll.
Harazza.
Hi.
Lancy.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Peiper.
Hi.
Malone.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Sulfah.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman.
Hi.
Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Uer.
Hi.
Serone.
Here.
Vocal singer.
I.
Fourteen yes, no, no, not absent.
Motion is approved. Okay, moving to item seven, matters from the public. For items not on the agenda, do we have anybody that wishes to address the City Council this evening? All right. Moving to eight is a presentation on the update of the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project, Jerry Roth. Ruth is here to do that. Welcome.
You very much. If I can get this thing to open up, hang on. And there we go. All right, so here's your November update for this year. We have a lot of buildings going on, a lot of concrete going on. They're trying their best to take advantage of the nice warm weather that they've had leading up to where we are in mid-November. So concrete work ongoing in their new headworks building and placing block walls up on the upper floor there. There's some wiring going on in the UV building, that's one of our milestones, where we're replacing a disinfection system for the wastewater treatment facility. And that's ongoing, they're looking to potentially be done with that in December, so a month early, but we'll cross our fingers. Primary clarifiers, again, ongoing, a lot of concrete all the time. There's generally three days out of the week that they're having pores out there. Primary clarifier control building, the plumbing piping is going in. The suspended slab formwork has been removed, so they're starting to work on some of the plumbing inside that ground floor level. The bike path in Water Street has been paved, so we're looking to open the bike path potentially by the end of the week, even though we're sort of out of season, and we're a little bit later than the contractor had initially told us he would be, but we do have that open and ready for public use very soon. And BEI property paving, that's just an area that the contractor is part of his agreement, paved to give him an area to lay down all of his trailers, which we're pretty far into construction, and he's now getting that done, but it's done. Pump station wet well piping, there are three raw sewage pump stations we're putting in as part of this project, and they're working on the piping for all of those. So some photos, offsite improvements, I mentioned the bike path, here's a view facing north along Pamarko Drive as it goes up past Water Street Studios, that is the path of the bike path. This is right before they placed the surface coat of asphalt. And this is the south end of that same bike path where it intersects with Union Avenue on the way down to the quarry. This is them paving the bike path, and on the left, past the retaining wall and the concrete ribbon that we have on the east side of that new bike path, that's a 10-foot wide strip. And on the right side is Water Street, getting the surface course placed, so it's nice and smooth, drove across it tonight to get here, it's in a nice, good transition. Pictures here are Morgue Bike Path, kind of wanted to focus on that. On the left, it's a picture of the crossing of Union. We now have a striped, protected crossing at that intersection, basically northeast of the intersection of Pamarko and Union. And then the two pictures to the right of that are both facing north, going up the bike path, just to see how the masonry block wall and the black ornamental metal fence will interact with, sort of pass you as you're going up the bike path heading north. This is that BEI parking lot, this is part of their property, I believe it's 204 Southwater is the property number. This whole area that you see getting paved is available for contractor stores, and they haven't used it, they've used some of the other space that we had available for them closer to the work. Now onto the headworks. We placed concrete for some of the foundation walls outside of the building, we placed the elevated concrete slab, so this is the second level, it's about 15 feet above street This is a view from October 6th, and the area that we took place then, we hadn't yet placed that concrete, so when you see the picture from this month, obviously that white area is the area that is now concrete, they're working on the block walls now on all sides of this building at this point, if you drive by now. Here's another aerial view of that building, just to show you, the bottom middle of the screen is Flynn Street, on the left side is the building, the main building that we put on the north end of the site in the last phase, and how we're overcoming the grade differential between street level here and up on Pamarko Drive. And there's clarifiers, not much to see here except for more and more concrete, so I'll probably fly by these here pretty quickly. A lot of our clarifiers required step footings, because we're in close proximity to other buildings that have shallow foundations, so we had to step them down periodically. And concrete was placed in the picture on the right, that's clarifier 403, within the last week and a half. So here's the aerial on October 6th, you see the walls going up in the clarifier on the top of the screen, and the clarifier control building at the bottom of the screen, the walls had just recently been placed. Now you see we have the elevated slab on top of the box for that building on the south end, or on the south bottom of your screen, and then the clarifier rebar is being placed for 403 near the middle. Jumping over to UV, so not a lot of good angles to show progress in pictures in this building, it's a very tight space, and all they're doing is wiring, they've been wiring for about three weeks. So they'll be continuing to wire for the next three weeks, and then they'll start starting up equipment. Oops, doubled up. Terms of costs, so progress to date, roughly $27,640,000 of work, including construction and engineering services. Estimated progress, again, based on days remaining in the schedule, is 42%, so more than halfway through the budget, they've been pushing and able to make a lot of progress and are intending to finish early as much as they can. Terms of change orders, no change since the last presentation here, there has been a change order requested, we're still at negative 11,000 and change. Terms of a schedule update, this is from their master schedule they submitted in the beginning of the month, I said Bike Path was next week, they still had it shown as mid-December, but that looks like that's when it's going to happen. The rest of the milestones for the major structures, there's no real update, and there are no delays. And that is your update for November of 2024. If you have any questions, let me hear them.
Any questions? I have a couple of comments, and they're good comments. This is being watched beyond Batavia right now, and I've been contacted by, I believe, three different mayors who want to know when this thing is going to be basically complete, because they want to bring their City Council over and show them this. So maybe you'll get, and I say nice things about you, so maybe you may get some additional business. But there, one of the mayors said to me, well, the word is out that Batavia is building the most modern, updated treatment plant in the Chicagoland area with what they're doing here, and this is going to be a model for everybody else to emulate. So you're catching eyes, and I'm not talking, you know, kind of substandard cities, it's some of the big boys that are in asking questions about what's going on here. So you're going to have some tours to do in 2026, I guess, is what you're saying in this?
I'll get my vest and my flag, I'll be able to lead people around, no problem.
Well, I'm just saying that it really is, and the other thing, I've had a couple of the home builders in town tell me that one of the reasons they're willing to come in and pay some pretty good prices for Batavia is that we got a good water and sewer system here. And apparently, there's some other cities that aren't quite up to our snuff. And so it's all good stuff, but I just wanted to share that with the City Council, that we've got people, and they're asking questions about what is really happening, and when can we come in and see it when it's done, so.
I appreciate it, thank you for the support.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is nine, the presentation of the Batavia Access Toy Drive, and Brittany Bailey is here, and you want to come up, and Brittany's family is, she's the third generation of her family now that did this, and I would credit her grandmother, Mildred, as one who really got this thing hopping. And Mildred was a personality that you didn't stand in her way, that she would go around you, behind you, or over the top of you, whatever it was, to get her jobs done, and she really bought into this toy drive thing, and it almost became her lifestyle, she really did, and so her children and now her grandchildren have taken this over. So you want to, with that nice introduction, you want to, I know that someplace up above, your grandmother's smiling down from heaven with what you're about to do.
Thank you. So the toy drive is four weeks from yesterday, so it's coming up real quick. Currently, we have just under 100 families signed up, and that's just in three weeks' time. We are picking up names every week, and it's increasing by about 30 every week, 30 families. Our largest category right now is teens, and that's about 40% of all the kids that we have signed up. For those of you that don't know, we help families with kids from ages zero to 17, and each kid's going to get a large gift that's valued at somewhere between $75 to $85, a small gift valued about $30, hat, gloves, book, puzzle, game. And then each family's also going to get a sports item, as well as a summer item. So far, we've put in about 180 volunteer hours in three weeks. Our best contact is through our email, bataviaaccess toys@gmail.com. And we'd like to thank our collection sites, the Batavia Public Library, Batavia Parcel, Daddy O's, the fire stations, as well as all BPS 101 schools, will start collecting after Thanksgiving. We do ask if there's gift cards, cash, or checks, that those go to the police station, then we come here to pick those up. Checks can be made out to Batavia Access Toys. Along with our other thank yous, we'd like to thank Groot, who gives us black garbage bags. The way that the toy drive's set up is our families sign up, and they tell us things that their kids are interested in. And then the week before the big pickup, we do a big shopping thing for them, and then it all gets put into black contractor bags, and then the families come down to pick up, and it's like a big target pickup. My brother stands outside and checks everybody in, gives them their number, then my husband and Coach Holm are calling numbers in, and the football team is carrying these big black garbage bags out to each car with everything inside, so that if parents have kids with them, as they often do, the kids don't know what they're getting, so they get to bring it home. We'd also like to thank Aldi, they are wonderful to us, the Batavia Women's Club, again, all of our collection sites. We have a lot of school groups that are coming to volunteer in the coming weeks. The City Council, without your guys' support, this would not happen, so we very much appreciate all of you. I'd personally like to thank my parents, my mom, my dad, my husband, my son, and my extended family who all come out and help. My husband goes to work, goes and coaches the football team, and then comes down to help, so that's pretty cool. They also get the football team involved in a lot of it with Coach Holm and him, so that's also really cool. We also just want to thank the community, this is all volunteer-based, and everything that we get is for Batavia, by Batavia, so thank you guys so much.
Questions of Brittany?
I just want to make one statement, that our first council meeting in December the 2nd, we'll get a table down here, and anybody that wants to bring anything down to donate for that, we'll make sure that they get it. So if you want to bring anything, bring it December 2nd to the meeting, and we'll make sure that Toy Drive gets it.
Thank you so much.
Questions from the council? I'd just like to share an experience I had twice in the last couple of weeks, is people show up here, and they want to know about getting themselves involved and on the list for the toy drive. And I said, well, it's very simple, you fill out the form, and tell us where you want, and what your kids' ages are, and whatever. And they say, well, we have a little bit of a problem, we don't live in Batavia. And this is something that Brittany and I have talked about a number of times, but this year, I'm fearful this is getting bigger and bigger, because this thing, again, is getting a great reputation in the region. And I had a woman down here from Elgin, and I mean, I was almost about wanting to go over to the police store and ask them to come in and involve themselves in the conversation with me, with her, because she was, just couldn't figure out why we couldn't open up our minds and allow Elgin people to get in here into this too. And I said, well, it's very simple, we just can't toy drive the whole area, we got to keep it to Batavia. And, you know, if I was you, I'd encourage Elgin to do the same thing, but we got a good thing going here, and a lot of people really want to get in on it. And it's gotten, the last couple of years that we've been doing the distribution, the Batavia Police Department supplies us with two or three uniformed officers, and they stand right at the line where the cars line up, because then they can kind of search out everybody that's in that line and make sure they got their letter that they were accepted to be in the program, and that we're not just kind of sneak in. Inevitably, the Batavia Police have to take a couple out of the line and say, we're sorry, you just can't come in, you're not from Batavia. So we're doing good things here, and I really think this is another good example of Batavia doing great things, and I thank Brittany and her family and all those working volunteering with her, because this really is something that, you know, you don't, there's not a lot of publicity around it from the perspective of who's happy, but I am certain there's a whole bunch of happy kids about on the 24th of December, when all this stuff gets unveiled. And there's a lot of groups that I know have contacted Brittany that make donations, but they don't want any credit, they don't want anybody to know. And I know several citizens have written, you know, $500 checks to help you cover your expenses, and they don't want any credit, they don't want anybody to know who's doing it. So it's kind of Batavia's unanimous generosity, I guess I would describe it. So we're fortunate to live in the town that we're representing, that has that great attitude about it, so thank you, and best wishes, and Merry Christmas, and onward and upward.
Thank you.
All right, next we have another good story, we have Beth Walker here from Main Street, she's the executive director. And last week, Batavia hosted the State Convention of Main Streets. And Beth told me tonight that, because I was asked to be the opening speaker, and we did it up at the library, and so I spent about 15 minutes, I guess it was, talking about the history of downtown Batavia. And I had some pictures that Todd Davis went with me, and we showed him of, you know, what had happened in this room when Dunbar Capple was in here, and they had a division called DK Aerospace, and they made the flexible fuel lines that were put into the rocket that landed on the moon in '69, were made in this room. And I showed the Academy Award statue, and that down the other end of the block, it was Schumway's Foundry, where for about 30 years, they made the molds for the Academy Award down there. And then we talked about, you know, other things that have happened in Batavia, including Mary Todd Lincoln being down there, and the fact that the Burnham family lived at the corner of Jefferson and Main Street, and Mr. Burnham was president of Marshall Fields, but he wanted his family to grow up in a small town with a downtown to it, and he didn't want them in a big city. So he commuted, he commuted to Chicago every day, but the family was right here. So this downtown's had a lot of interesting celebrities, think, also shared the story about how in 1915, we had Bess Segren, whose father is credited with being one of the founders of Flag Day, which is where the monument comes from out here. And she was in the same class with the Methodist minister's daughter, and their name was, last name was, of all things, Moon. And so Marion Moon was in the same class with Dr. Segren's daughter, and Marion Moon ends up being the mother of Buzz Aldrin, who put the American flag on the moon. So we really do have some very interesting history in this town, that I kind of felt like I was standing there bragging, but when it was over with, I had a number of people say to me, goodness gracious, I can't believe this town had all that history, boy, I wish my town had this, all this. I don't know how many times I came down Wilson Street, and it seemed like every time I came down the street, they had walking groups, and you had them over at the Boardwalk Shop, and in some of the history buildings, and there was a lot of picture-taking, number one, the Boardwalk Shops, and also the Comedy Vault. That seemed to be of high interest by all the visitors of what has been done in downtown Batavia. But, so tell us about your, what was your success there, you really were successful in this.
Well, you threw me off, because I wasn't going to start there, I was going to end there, but I guess I can go ahead, and I'll jump forward, and then I'll go back. Conference was really good, we had about 200 attendees, and that represented 58 different communities from throughout Illinois. We were really happy with that. Kate was kind enough to do a historic walking tour, and then Water Street offered an art tour. Kristin and I did entrepreneurial ecosystem tour with the Boardwalk Shops and the alumni shops, who are now in brick and mortar. But overall, it was a really great event, people were really happy and impressed with all of our venues and our buildings. We, Batavia Main Street, won Lieutenant Governor Award for Excellence and Promotion for the 2024 Restaurant Guide that we did, that we did in place of Restaurant Madness. It was to gauge success of that program, our board and our staff prioritized measurable outcomes with this change in strategy, and to date, we've had over 2,100 unique scans of that guide, and it's a completely free service for the businesses. And we did make sure all of the attendees had that, as well as the retail guide that we've created, so they knew all the different shops that they could dine and shop at. And then another thing that happened at the award, Brittany Sabatino, who you see up there with the Lieutenant Governor, won volunteer recognition. Brittany is a really great example of someone who's gone through our entrepreneurial ecosystem. She started as an artisan collective vendor, moved on to the Boardwalk Shop, and now she is in brick and mortar. And she's just such a great story, because she gives back as much, she's now on our board. She volunteers at many of our events, she's on our Boardwalk Shop Committee, so if you see her, congratulate her for all the fine work she does for Batavia. And then the final day of the conference, we did a build project, and together with the conferencegoers and the Better Block team, we built 12 of these colorful Batavia signs that are throughout downtown, and this project intention is to create visual continuity through our downtown district, to get people to explore on foot and experience all the things that we have to offer, the retail, the restaurants, the art. So these can be moved around, and they can be moved indoors, they do belong to Batavia now, which is nice. I don't know if you've seen them, you can see the one up there, I think they look great around town. So conference was good. Okay. Now I'm going to go back. So since we saw you last, we did conference, and Bat Fest, and the Holiday Sneak Peak, and Winterfest Art Market. We were really happy, I mean, Bat Fest was super well-attended, we had another great day, we had a lot of positive feedback with the Holiday Trolley that we did this year, people really loved it, we had lots of families just riding around Batavia, and one of the things that we really were trying to do with this, for years, our businesses up on 31 have said it's difficult to get people to cross over and go up there, they all reported that they had, they saw really nice foot traffic for that event, so it did meet the goal, and we are hoping to do future trolleys for events like that in the future. Winterfest Art Market was good, we probably, I would say, we exceeded our attendance from last year, we haven't done final numbers on that, but it was good. And then another thing that's not up there is the start of the indoor market. The indoor market is at Granology again this year, we actually saw our largest attendance we've ever had at the indoor market on the 9th, and that was 543 visitors, and that's not so bad considering it's a three-hour time period. So for the Holiday Sneak Peak, we did a paid spot on WGN, that aired on November 5th, and we had asked some different businesses in downtown, they had to be within walking distance, but we had to, they had to turn their shops over, so they were holiday-ready before Halloween. So we were lucky enough to have some businesses that did that, and it was a really nice spot, So if you haven't seen this, it's on our socials. And then today, we released the, our gift guide, our Holiday Gift Guide is something that we started last year. April Judah goes around and she takes pictures of the products at the Sneak Peak and then we are, it was released on our social media. And then we will be, this will be in the upcoming version, the upcoming edition of the Batavian Magazine, as well as the Neighborhood Tourist Magazine, which is a regional publication and it will be distributed to 15,000 addresses, subscribers throughout the northern Illinois, as well as 150,000 digital users. It will also go in the Hometown Holiday Happenings, the Local Shopping Guide, which are both Shaw publications. And then we will have a targeted email blast, which will look like it comes from us, but we will select the zip codes and it will be sent out to 10 different, 10,000 different subscribers that have signed up to receive their publication. So anyways, we've had a lot going on and does anybody have any questions for me? Thank you to everybody who did, had a chance to go to conference. It was, it was inspiring. So thank you. Any questions?
Questions? I mean, I think we have a Main Street organization we can be very, very proud of that it's put this together and continues to do new innovative things that get people from other towns to come in here. That's what I find very interesting. And then I get the mayor's calling me up wanting to know what Batavia's doing about this and so.
You tell them hustling. That's what we're doing.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to log out of here.
Administrator's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have just been informed that Kirk Road is finally open again. That was pretty painful last Friday, wasn't it? Yeah, so that was a very drastic thing for the community to adjust to, not only, you know, members of our community, but the other 30,000 people that use Kirk Road, trying to find a different route. But as the time wore on, it seemed more and more people were aware of the idea to stay away from that area. And now that train track is now safe and operational again. So we're really happy that they were able to also get the permanent paving down on that as well. So all open for business again. We continue to work at the Webster Street property, conducting the further environmental investigation and remediation so that hopefully, once the toy drive is finished this year, that they'll be able to relocate over to that property and that we can begin the build out that is needed at the 916 First Street to become the permanent home for the food pantry and clothes closet. And I always just love to remind people that, you know, 916 First Street is being done at zero cost to Batavia taxpayers. That is thanks to a grant when Lauren Underwood represented this area and knew that the old home at the wastewater treatment plant, as we saw today with the renovations and additions that are going on there, they were going to be displaced by that project. And we are so grateful to have received those federal funds in order to not only purchase this property for their use, but they also still have a million dollars left to use for the build out and also purchase of equipment that they will need in that new location. I also want to give a shout out to our city engineer, Rahat Bari. He was relentless in pursuing additional funding for Prairie and Wilson Street project that we had, which due to the length of time that it was pending, when the bids came back, there was insufficient federal funding and what we had originally budgeted for that to cover the cost of the project. And we were having to use TIP funds as well as general funds in order to cover the deficit for that project. But because Rahat made requests, followed up on those requests and every year in the federal funding scheme of things, there are dollars which for whatever reason, end up not being allocated because let's say, local funding isn't available to move forward with the project. He made sure that Batavia was part of the conversation as a project needing additional funding. And so the city of Batavia thinks really, in large part due to his efforts, received 1.7 million dollars in additional funding for that project. So thanks Rahat. Our fire department held an orientation for our paid on call. That's a part-time program and really proud that we had 14 people show up for that orientation. That's really, these days, that is a very good crowd to attract. And it says something about the City of Batavia Fire Department being a destination department. And then just wanted to, Alan, thank you for mentioning the library and offering their parking to us. I sat down a few months back with Joseph Intucci, who is the new Executive Director, after I'd seen a similar agreement between the City of St. Charles and their library. And when I brought the idea up to Joe, she was immediately, she said, that just makes complete sense. So brought it to her board. They approved it unanimously as well. And so we're very happy to be able to provide additional parking in an area where that is pretty desperately needed. And I think of a real advantage to our South Batavia Avenue businesses. I had opportunity to talk with JT's and they were super happy that this was going to be coming online because the times of business are about opposite, right? Just as the library is closing, his business is becoming busy. So it's really nice to have that additional parking in that area. Congratulations to Main Street. Those awards were well deserved and I'm so happy to see them recognized for the incredible contribution that they make to creating just a lively atmosphere that is conducive for small business in our community. And also wanted to congratulate them on a super successful event, well attended by their peers from elsewhere in Illinois. And I think all of us must have seen the folks with the lanyards walking around downtown with big smiles on their faces headed to places other than where their scheduled events were. So it was just a really nice thing for our downtown and we were really grateful to be able to host that here. And then lastly, just wanted to let everyone know that next Tuesday's Committee of the Home meeting is the public hearing on the levy and 2025 budget. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes?
I'm not sure if I missed it. What was the, what was our total out of pocket cost then for the new street light or the new stoplight and intersection?
You know, I'm not exactly sure on the specific amount. You know, I know the overall project costs, but I don't know like to which line item to attribute. You know what I mean? So if you look at the stoplight being maybe $230,000.
I spent the whole project.
Oh, the whole project.
The whole project. What was our, then our total cost with?
You know, I'm just going to throw a ballpark figure out there of 25% would have been maybe, maybe higher than that on this project because of the length of time for the project. The commitment for federal funding happened earlier on in the project and then we know what construction costs have done over that period of time. And the federal government doesn't usually say, oh, we'll throw in for the same percentage. So any, any underfunding then becomes the responsibility of the community, but that 1.7 million surely helped those numbers. I can get that information for you. Sorry, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Because I saw a post today, someone's like, well, how much did that cost? And I couldn't confidently answer it. It's an insane thing, but I'm sure, because it's controversial, of course, because, oh, we don't need that there. But when people start asking, it's nice to, it's nice to be able to say, well, you know what, that barely costs us anything.
Exactly, exactly.
The cost is this, but we only pay.
You know what I can definitely say is but for resources created through federal funding like this, it would take the City of Batavia so much longer to get to improvement projects like that. And it just, you know, being able to do them sooner is an advantage, not only from the infrastructure standpoint, but from an employment standpoint too. Those are great jobs that people are working out there and that helps to put additional funding back into our community.
I would just like to say in follow up on what you just said, publicly thank Rahat for the job he did in putting together data and understanding as to what had happened and what still needed to be done. As most of you know, I serve as Chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and Council of Mayors Downtown. And because I'm the chairman, I get to sit on the State Transportation Policy Committee, which is where all the money gets divvied up. And it was very easy. I didn't have to get too involved in it, thanks to the good job that Rahat had done with the staff as far as what was being asked for and what we were going to do and what we were dealing with, one of the earliest railroad crossings in the state of Illinois at that location. And it went back to literally about the 1830s is when it was first put in there. And so there's been a lot of history associated with that over the years. And I think being on the main road to run, ran, ran into Fermilab didn't hurt it at all either. That helped, kind of helped us push the idea along. So we did get our fair share in that as I'm very proud to be able to say, thanks to Rahat that we got that done. So I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly that that happened.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Going to the mayor's report, I've already talked a lot tonight and I was going to talk about the Main Street Convention, but that's already been very, but I would like to publicly make some comments about the Batavia High School football team and the success that they are having at this time and the coaching that they are getting. But one of the things I really would like to pay some appreciation to is the broadcast team that has been covering it. And as we all know, one of the main broadcasters is one of our counterparts here in Alderman Wolf and his companion, Mr. Lundberg. And I've had several people, I was up to talk to some gentlemen at the Homestead last week and they were big fans and they truly enjoy going in and sitting and watching the game. And they said, it's like Batavia's got professional sportscasters. These guys know how to talk, how to say it, don't hem and haw around. They just go right to it. And I think they've discovered, we got a high school student that's kind of right in the same group with them and Al brought him on to a game recently when the, Mr. Lundberg couldn't be there and the kid did a fabulous job. And so I think we've started something here and we should be very proud of it. But now, in the last couple of days, now that we won again on Saturday, my phone's been ringing and my, I've been sought out in stores and everything else. Where can we watch the game next Saturday? And so can you tell us what you know?
Sure, I'll give the information that I have today. First thing is go to New Lennox, go down to Lincoln Way Central and be there for the game. Last week, again, at home, we had over 1,000 viewers pretty concurrently for most of the game, up to about 4,000 individual views at, at certain points. But the game is the best place to be to begin with. And you know, even when Dave and I had to go down and be there for the one at Lincoln Way West, that was, you know, a lot of fun, wasn't really the way we wanted it to go for the first half, but at least it turned out good. Then the second thing would be, if we get the approval, BATV will be available on YouTube, on our YouTube channel at BATV1017, which is on youtube.com. The third one, depending on whether we're giving them the feed or whether they're providing their own, would be NFHS.com, which is the National Federation of High School Sports. And they, Lincoln Way Central is a NFHS school right now, but we don't know yet if we'll have rights to broadcast it as well. We should find that out by Wednesday. We'll make sure we get that to the city so we can get it on the city website and on Facebook and anywhere else we post. So we'll get information out as soon as possible. I would guess it will be sometime Wednesday when we'll know. Because as it moves through the playoffs, it gets harder and harder to get the games to do that. Last week, Geneva's game, actually I don't think was broadcast by their own TV. It was done as a actual broadcast, was the game of the week last week. So it was on WCIU as a broadcast channel and they were the only ones that had rights to it. So we've had that happen already this year. So those are the opportunities for it. The game is at 5 o'clock in New Lennox at Lincoln Way Central. So we'll make sure we get out whatever information we have on Wednesday.
We'll try to get it on, on the city website as quickly as we know. And so anybody that may ask you, where can we watch this game? Nothing else, tell them to check the city website and there'll be some available information.
Usually I try to keep perusing the social media on Fridays when it's a Saturday game and make sure if anybody asks a question, I get the information to them. Just copy and paste the links to the game.
Well, I would tell you that I hear widespread adulation about the broadcast team that we got from Batavia High School. You guys really have.
And it's somewhat frustrating to Dave and I when we can't do a game and then they don't have a crew that actually broadcasts the game. It's just a camera that runs during the game and you listen to the P A in the background. That's the real frustrating thing to me is when they tell us we can't do that and we'll give them the broadcast for free for whatever, whatever their outlet is or wherever they want it to go. But you know, sometimes they just don't want to let somebody from the outside in.
For the benefit of those who are watching this on TV, we're playing Saturday night at 5 o'clock in New Lennox. If we win, what's, where are we at then in the, in the state?
We'll be in the state title game after that.
We will be in, so we're in the semifinals.
Semi-final game Saturday.
And who are we playing at Lincoln Way?
Lincoln Way Central.
Oh, we're playing.
We've already played Lincoln Way West and beat them.
Okay.
So now we're going to Central.
And that's all New Lennox for all pretend purposes.
Yep.
So, okay, well, that's interesting to know. Who do you think would be the other team coming at us?
I gotta believe it's going to be Mount Carmel coming out of the other side of the bracket. Yeah, they won in a crazy game, I think it was 49 to 42 or something last week at, at Normal Community, another team that we played in the state title game.
The state championship is going to be played where?
Illinois State.
Illinois State.
Yep. Redbird Stadium?
Hancock Stadium.
Hancock Stadium. Go Birds. I knew you'd know that.
I mean, that's, talk about something that is the talk of the town. This is the talk of the town this week and probably next week, depending on what happens. So I thought we should bring the city council into the conversation here and let everybody.
Really high hopes for this team. They're really playing well. Last week, they didn't allow offensive touchdown.
Right.
They had one pick six and that was it. Held them to under five yards, five yards of offense in the first half and then under 100 in the game.
Or win or lose, Batavia should be extremely proud of that athletic program at Batavia High School, as a number of other programs we got there.
Well, and the other thing, as we heard it already tonight here, they all volunteer. When something needs to get done in town and somebody asks the football coaching staff or the players, they show up. And a lot, a lot of the sports teams in this town are all, volunteering is part of that program, which is great.
That's why we have all these people wanting to suddenly move into Batavia.
Yeah.
It looks like we're going to between 2020 and 2026, we could easily build about 900 new living units in some form or fashion in this town. Many of them are already built.
It reminds me of something. When are we going to do our special census? Can we talk about that again for '25? I forgot to ask that at the budget meeting the other night.
I think it would be definitely worthy of a conversation because prior to us knowing about the additional Pulte project, we had anticipated doing it late in 2025 or early in 2026. But now if there's going to be additional build out in 2026 that won't get realized until 2027, we're three years away from a new census. So it's something I think that worthy of a discussion early next year.
Okay. Somebody else remember to bring that up too, so that I don't have to remember.
Good point. Thanks for bringing it up. Anybody else on the council thing, anyone? Anybody else on the council having anything they want to say tonight? Did you entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Exactly.
Moved by Alderman Soufa, second Alderman Wolf, voice vote or however you call the role? Call the role.
Beraza, Lancy, Beck, Piper, Malone, Wolf, Soufa, Baron, Lehman, Ayazi, Lele, Uwe, Saron.